Welcome, I'm on the call to order the February 16, 2016 regular meeting of the Northville Township ZBA Appeals. We can start, please stand with your pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, never be destroyed.
Next is the roll call, Mr. Colletti, would you call?
Ms. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Colletti here, Ms. Stephens?
Present.
Present. And Ms. Chalkley?
Next up, adoption of the agenda. There were a couple of changes made to the agenda that were posted on the website. We don't have copies of them, but we need to elect officers, so that would be meeting number five, election of ZVA officers. And meeting number six, the 2016 meeting schedule.
I move that we adopt the corrected agenda.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda adopted. Next up, we need to elect officers for the 2016 term of the ZVA.
Excuse me, is your microphone off?
It is now. Sorry. We need to elect officers for the 2016 term of the ZVA. We need a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary.
Are you willing to serve, Ms. Stephens, as chair if I nominate you? Okay.
Yes, I will.
I'll nominate Amy Stephens as for chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. Now we need a vice chair.
Are you interested?
Mr. Colletti?
Well, I was the secretary.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll stay as a secretary.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Okay. All right. Then why don't we go ahead and vote in, or take a motion to vote in Mr. Colletti as secretary?
Okay. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering for that.
What do we get for vice chair?
Vice chair. Any volunteers?
I don't know exactly, I could do it, but can you do it? Are you allowed to do it?
I don't know if I can do it.
I was reading it.
I can't do chair.
You can't be chair, but would, would you like to be vice chair?
I could be vice chair.
Okay. I'll nominate Jackie Otto for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Do I have, moved, yes, moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right.
Moving on to the 2016 meeting schedule. Zoning Board of Appeals. As you know, the ZVA meetings are held as needed only when there is a case on the docket to be heard. The January 18th meeting was canceled because there was nothing on the agenda. Tonight's February 16th, the following dates will be the ZVA meetings again as needed, March 21st, April 18th, May 16th, June 20th, July 18th, August 15th, September 19th, October 17th, November 21st, and December 19th. Do we need to vote this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
So it is the, it will be the third Monday of each month at seven o'clock, right? I take it? Okay.
Yes. Yes, the third Monday. Except from today, because yesterday was the holiday.
Okay. So I move that we adopt the calendar as stated.
I'll support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Calendar adopted. Moving on to the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So this is public hearing case number ZVA 160001. Nowatzky, am I saying that properly? Nowatzky Truck and Trailer at 6900 Whitmore Lake Road, Whitmore Lake, Michigan, 48189. Request variance from section 36-793-1 and 2 for additional wall signs on the gasoline pump canopy. A variance from section 73-795 for eight pump toppers to read Marathon. A variance from section 36-803, Article 29, and section 36-901, and section 36-796 to remove a portion of an existing legal non-conforming sign and install a nine-six-foot-by-one-foot electronic message sign. A variance to retain a legal non-conforming four-foot by ten-inch pole sign that was shown on the proposed site plan to be removed. The Northville Township Planning Commission approval was based on the removal of four existing pole signs. The parcel number is B022030036 and is zoned GC, General Commercial. So if anyone is here in favor or would like to speak in support of the request, that would be the applicant, now is your time, please come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Turn on the microphone and speak into it, please. And hopefully that is turned on. Is that turned on? Just a moment. Oh, we got you now.
Okay. Shall I repeat our, our address?
Yes, please repeat your address.
Here on Sign Company, 663 South Mansfield, Ypsilanti, Michigan. Well, thanks for having us up, up here this evening to, to listen to our case. As the application indicates, Tom Nowatzky is the owner of Nowatzky Truck and Trailer. He's, he's seated currently next to me. The way the ordinance reads in 2016 and 2015 was that the signs are somewhat limited in quantity and in number of signs. Therefore, when we erected the Marathon gas station, the canopy that houses the pumps and keeps people away from the bad weather does have three signs on it. We were granted one sign through Kurt and the ordinance, and that is the illuminated channel letter wall sign that faces the West Elevation or Alexander's. The other two that we're seeking a variance for are the vinyl, non-illuminated vinyl decals that are on the north and south sides of the canopy. These are non-illuminated, unobtrusive, they just simply help reiterate the brand identification and give people on Whitmore Lake exposure when traveling, Whitmore Lake Road, traveling south and north on the road to identify the gas station. So that, according to the application, is our first variance request. Would you like me to, to go through them all, or do you want to handle one at a time?
This time we, we can't vote, so what you can do probably is to go through each one.
Go, go through it all, okay. All right, thank you.
And, and Mr. Anderson, do you have any sign elevations or a site plan that shows the, the location of the signs and what the, the signs are going to look like in scale on the canopies?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we do. Would you like to see those?
Yes, please.
I have actually too, too many papers here for the slope on this, so hang on just a second. The scale is the same on all three signs, it's just that the West Elevation is internally illuminated and the two sides, like I just showed you, are just the decals. Thank you. In addition to the canopy, the variance for two additional canopy wall signs in vinyl as non-illuminated. We are also requesting eight pump toppers. These are the, the illuminated tops of the pumps that are demonstrated on the other photograph, and it's a standard identification package that goes out with the pumps when these stations are erected. Mr. Nowatzky really has no say one way or another whether the, the pump topper would have the name on it or not. These are how they were purchased from Duncan Oil, who's the supplier for the Marathon fuel. And we were seeking a variance for these eight pump toppers. We worked with Kurt to narrow the, the language down here. There are four pumps with pump toppers on each side. They're non-permissible by the current ordinance, so we're seeking a variance for those as well. And our, our third variance request is for the billboard sign out off US 23. The, the billboard was in place when Mr. Nowatzky purchased the property and has been unchanged except refaced once or twice over the years. Our current request for variance is to remove 200 square feet of that existing non-conforming billboard sign and erect 72 square feet of internally illuminated electronic message center. This message center would be six by 12, the same size as the one across the street at Sunoco, the same manufacturer. This would replace the 200 square feet that we're generously offering to remove in order to have an opportunity to erect that message center and be, and be competitive with the marketplace on 23 to let traffic traveling both north and southbound realize that we're there, what we have to offer, as well as competitive gas pricing.
Good evening, I'm Tom. I sent, I gave you a sheet there and have some additional pictures. In the mid eighties, nineties, when we moved in here, there were six signs there. I, until three months ago, I hadn't changed any of them other than to resurface them. And if you read the, the next pictures, one and two, those two signs have been removed already. And I've agreed to remove two more. If you go to the next paragraph, fuel was there before I moved in, I had it removed, and we just put fuel back. And you'll see our gas pumps in picture number three, which I've marked accordingly, and the diesel pumps have had the sign on them, says Nowatzky Truck and Trailer. By the way, I didn't know that, that was going to be on there, Duncan put that on there, but I'm living with it, okay? And then if you go to the next paragraph, picture number five shows that sign had been removed and that propane stuff been removed too. And the wall sign is going to come off. And the other sign to be removed is the other one on Whitmore Lake Road, says Nowatzky Truck and Trailer, says to be removed.
So Tom, the, this one right here where it says Nowatzky Truck and Trailer?
That's new.
Yeah, that's new, and is that going to stay?
That's new.
Okay.
There's no Marathon markings on those diesel pumps at all, just on the other pumps.
Okay. I'm just going to ask a simple question, is there a reason why?
Why what?
Why there wasn't a Marathon? Is it because they don't?
Because then you're not
They're two separate products, or?
People don't do that, because you're locked into buying Marathon diesel, and this way you can buy it on the open market a lot cheaper.
Okay.
And Duncan Oil, my supplier, who by the way apologizes, his car broke down in Albion about 4:30 and he didn't make it, but they wanted to be here tonight, my, my gasoline supplier. But that's the way a lot of people do it, okay? You don't brand the diesel pumps, because you can buy it on the open market cheaper.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, just wanted to know.
But I was really excited when I started to do this to know that I could get Marathon, since it's one of the few American-made gasolines.
I appreciate the packet.
Thank you. I, I tried to put it in some correlation so you can understand where we came from, okay?
Because I remember, you know, I've been by there a couple of times and I'm going, okay, I wish I could have just walked around to see where everything was, but I wasn't going to do that.
Just come in and see me anytime.
Okay.
I'm there every day, okay? Just come in and see me.
This packet was very good.
And then we get down to the bottom where it says the canopy. If you're going to be a Marathon dealer, you got to have signs on the pumps and two signs, non-illuminated signs on the canopy. And it's minimum that they require. Is there any Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we, we put the gas back in, and I have a 2.5-plus investment there. It's, we've been open for about three weeks, and things are starting to get a little more active, but the diesel is, really sucks right now, because we don't have a sign on 23. But we plan to hire at least eight to 10 more people. We have four people right now from Whitmore Lake, all of them from Whitmore Lake. And I, I really want to hire them from Whitmore Lake, because if there's an emergency, they can come fix it while I don't have to come from home, so. And other than that, I don't hear anything, Jim. I think that explains pretty much what we're doing here.
And the illuminating side of the sign faces Whitmore Lake Road, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yep. Would be the West Elevation that faces Alexander's Market there.
Okay.
I also want to take a minute to thank Kurt, because he's really been good through this whole process. I had some people working for me sometimes that were a little bit non-responsive, let's put it that way. And once I took control of it, I think it, it went the right way, so I want to thank you, Kurt, for that. Anybody have any questions?
Other than I was going to ask her, on the highway sign, was there a reason why he didn't have more space coming down? Because he took off the two additions? You took off the two additions, was it because this, where this is at, the electronic sign that's where it's supposed to be located in height and everything? Is that what the requirement is, or?
Well, that's a proposal, he wants to put the digital sign.
Okay.
Here's his existing sign.
Yeah.
We can, we can get a bigger sign, but I didn't want to go any bigger than the competition across the street. And I don't think he'd want me to put up the whole thing with digital, so. Plus, it's really expensive.
The, the sign you're looking at is, is kind of a different, I think should be separated from the other signs on the property.
Okay.
Technically, that sign is not on Mr. Nowatzky's property. He owns the sign, he has an, he has an easement for the sign, but it's not on his physical property.
Is it determined who owns that property? Did we find that out?
I, I do.
Okay.
I do. We had that, I wouldn't sell the tractor supply property unless they needed the sign to me. It's only one sixteenth of an acre.
Okay.
There's, there's the split off right there. There's four of those there, Jim. I got four.
I would actually like to deal with the, the two issues separately. There's the site plan
Okay.
that the Planning Commission saw, and I, I can't, I can't vote on both what the Planning Commission did and here what happens at the ZVA, so I, I need to abstain for that part of it. But I can weigh in on the US 23 sign, because that was not part of our site plan.
I don't know if we have a quorum to vote on.
They have one.
How many do we have? Five is your total, three is a quorum.
Okay.
But I think you do have to, all three of you agree to it. Is that, is that what you understand? All three would need to approve. Yes.
What's he saying?
If they wished to.
So Marlene is a member of the Planning Commission and must abstain from voting on the sign that was already dealt with at the Planning Commission.
The site plan.
The site, which is the, the pole sign.
All the, all the, all the signage on the site plan.
So whatever is left, the ZVA, the remaining three ZVA members may vote, but you need all three of us to vote yes in order to approve. So you have the option of continuing that portion of the, of your hearing to another night, to the next hearing, when there would be more ZVA members. We're down a member tonight.
I'm in a position where I'm under the gun, I can't wait, I got to have a sign. I got to be competitive, okay? So if it goes from here, I got to take some other action, I don't know what that is, but I need to have that approved or in some fashion.
The, the sign that they, they cannot all vote on is the billboard sign.
Okay.
You have all the other signs already up there.
Yes.
So you're not going to lose anything.
I understand.
They're, they're already there, so
I understand that.
The only one, they, they can have four vote on the billboard sign, so your option is to
I want all, I want the rest of them to vote on the billboard sign, because I have to have something up there. Every day it's not up there, I lose business, okay?
But the other ones, the, the other ones that are not the billboard sign is what they're
All four people can vote on that, right?
No. Only the billboard sign can all four people vote on.
Oh, okay.
That's what I want, I want you to know, so
Okay.
you're, you're, you're not making that choice for the billboard, only for the other sign, so.
Okay. We're going to go for it. That's fine.
Because the, the sign package that we're considering now was included in the Planning Commission.
Everything, all of the, the site plan did not include the billboard that's on US 23. We didn't deal with that as a planning commission.
But every, all the other signs.
All the other pole signs that were removed and all of that signage, we did deal with as a planning commission.
Do you, Mr. Anderson, I still don't have a site plan that shows where the proposed signs are going. I, I didn't
The proposed signs are up, all it really amounts to is the canopy that's up.
But I, I didn't have anything
And the goalpost sign, it should be on the site plan. The site plan was handled prior to my involvement.
Okay. Because I didn't have anything in my packet. There was nothing in the packet that showed. So all of, all of the signs, because your canopy signs, or the, the pump topper signs are up?
Yes, yes.
Correct, yeah.
The pumps came with those.
Okay, so what, what is, what you already have there now is the Marathon price sign, I'll call it, with, on Whitmore Lake Road, the Nowatzky Truck and Trailer sign on Whitmore Lake Road. You have the pump toppers, then you have the pole at the northeast corner that says Nowatzky Truck and Trailer?
That's coming down.
That's coming down.
That's coming down.
But that's what's there now?
Yes.
Yes. See, that would have been helpful to have had a site plan that showed what
I don't understand why, I've got twelve different site plans that were delivered to the township, I don't understand why you don't have one.
Yeah, that's
You said the northeast corner of the buildings?
Northwest, northwest.
She said northeast.
I'm sorry, the northwest corner, that Nowatzky Truck and Trailer sign's coming down. It's by the old gate, okay?
So the northeast corner sign
Northwest, northwest.
Which one is coming down?
Northwest.
Northwest is coming down.
It's the one that's on Whitmore Lake Road, right?
Yes.
This sign here was north of the building, that's the down one.
Okay. Right, okay. There's one more, yeah. This one. This one.
That's what he wants to keep, this is, this is the one that
So this is the one you want to keep? Okay. Okay. Okay, that would have Okay. And that sign is located where?
Right, on the northwest corner of Whitmore Lake.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. But this might help, Amy. Are there any other questions for the applicant? At this time?
Not this time.
No? All right. Mr. Wyland, could we hear some, do you have anything to? Right. Right, we need to Oh, that, well, see, I've got the procedure list, and that comes after you, is what
Yeah.
They should have had that guy up here before us.
Yeah. Yeah. Kurt just, all right.
It's out of our hands.
Kurt, do you have anything to, to add?
We're, we're going to have the public hearing back. After.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, is the public hearing closed? Can I, did I, can I speak?
No, sir, it is not. You will get a chance after Mr. Wyland. Yes.
I can run down my list, just to kind of be, try to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Please do.
The, since there are two businesses on the site, there's Nowatzky Truck and Trailer, and then there's the Marathon Gas and Convenience Store. The diesel pump canopy, which has Nowatzky Truck and Trailer, is, is a permitted sign. They are allowed, I think it's two square feet if I remember right, I'm sorry, per lineal foot of frontage, so the, the frontage issue of a wall sign is not a concern. They're, they are permitted one wall sign per business. So we have one for the Nowatzky Truck and Trailer, and the walls, pardon me, the wall signs may be attached to the canopy instead of the wall. So the Nowatzky Truck and Trailer on the canopy is a permitted sign. No issues there. The signs on the Marathon, I don't know if you want to stay with Nowatzky, or, I think we'd be asked to, I'm going to move through to the next canopy?
Right.
Okay, and, and the Marathon side, they, again, their, their square footage is not a problem of sign area. The issue is, is that there's more than one wall sign for the Marathon.
So there is not a issue with the illuminating sign?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Nor the, nor the decal ones that say Marathon. The, the size of the signs, if you put them all together, would not exceed the permitted wall sign allowance for that building.
Okay.
The only issue is, is that there's three of them instead of one, which the ordinance states. That takes care of wall signs. Pump toppers Pump toppers are just not permitted in the ordinance. Previous, historically previous other, previously other stations have come, I've read in the records and basically were turned down on pump toppers. So it's, I usually do permit a Marathon label of some sort. And that, that could be viewed also as a sign, but I kinda think it's a good compromise. Most of those signs are decals and they do come off. We certainly remove them in other communities.
Let's go back. The pump topper is just that sign that says Marathon above the pump?
Yep, across the top of the pump. So again, it's a sign-
And the other ones in the area don't have them?
Yeah, this one, I mean, this Sunoco has a topper.
Again, the, the, what other stations have done-
Okay.
They may have gotten variances.
Oh, okay.
Sitco was turned down. Actually, it wasn't Sitco, it was Marathon back then. And then Shell came back years later and they were also turned down. But really, the, the reasoning, I couldn't tell you. So it's not a matter of across the board type of thing, but a lot of the signage in this community has been permitted via variances and not necessarily by the sign ordinance.
Okay, I think, but when I went past the Sitco station, they do have toppers.
They have an emblem.
Okay.
They removed the name that said Sitco.
Oh, okay. So it's the name on the topper that is not-
Right, is considered a sign. Because it reads the brand name.
Thank you.
Yep. So that takes care of the wall signs and the pump toppers. The pole signs on the property. The Nowatzki Truck and Trailer, which is located at the northeast corner of the building, is a sign that was initially noted on the approved site plan to be removed. Technically, the pole sign section of the ordinance would permit them to have one on each road frontage. So if you, and US 23 would be considered a frontage.
Okay.
So technically, they could probably say that that's their road frontage sign. The square footage, total amount of signage for the pole sign is limited to eighty square feet total. So the, that's why in the, we have the new road sign on Whitmore Lake Road where we permitted forty square feet, splitting it in half, saying, okay, you can ply the other half to the other side. Or we'll, and then the gas numbers, the gas values, they are basically a freebie in the gas station, up to six square feet. So that's how those are calculated. So that sign technically, via the original site plan, was to be removed. When I consulted with the planner, she had recommended that go, come to the ZBA and ask for a variance to keep it. So with that in mind, it is certainly greater than the minimum forty square feet or maximum forty that would be allowed. It is a non-conforming sign. It becomes an issue with the fact that if this is their frontage pole sign, what do we call the other one? So that's kind of an issue, you know, a concern. So I, I'm not sure how you wanna handle that. I feel kinda like the, if, if the billboard sign is to be viewed as an onsite sign and that should be, take up their percentage of road frontage sign, then it's, you know, it's kind of a, it's a tough issue to deal with. It was certainly a legal non-conforming sign prior to the improvements and the going to the, the planning commission. So do you want me to move on to the billboard or leave that one for later?
No. So my question is that the pole sign was an old sign, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And it still existed with the other sign that was the billboard sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Wyland, what would you call the sign that sits on top of the pump that says Fueling the American Spirit? Because it's on all, all of the pumps on both sides. What, and it said, I think, I believe it has the Marathon, does it have the Marathon logo on it?
It sounds politically oriented, but I-
Because that's their tagline and it's on-
Well, I, that, that hasn't even been presented necessarily. I'm not sure if I'm real concerned about-
That's the lower, lower sign at the bottom?
Right, it's the one that's, well, it's the one that sits right on top of the pump.
There's nothing on top of those pumps.
You mean if, you mean this one right here?
Or the, the, no, the, under the Marathon sign.
This one?
Yes, right there.
That is advertising.
Oh, yeah, it's just like a little billboard.
She's talking about this.
Yeah, that's advertising. It's an advertisement to you from the side. Do you want to, yes, that's a TV.
It's a TV?
No. It says Fueling the American Spirit. On, I, I, yeah, this one here.
That's a TV.
Yes. That's a, that's a, and it's funny. Okay. So when it's off, it says Fueling the American Spirit. Because that's what it said today. Okay, so, yeah. So, so that's, that is the-
That's Marathon's pump.
Okay, so that's a TV.
I've never looked at it when it was off.
A TV monitor. So we won't consider that as-
I, I wouldn't. I mean, I think most of them put, I, I call it similar to litter on a stick, which is the little signs people put by the side of the road, very similar to that, so I, I wouldn't give it any value.
Now, the Sunoco, I believe it's the Sunoco, they do not have the, the pump toppers.
They have something, but they don't have the name.
I don't believe, I don't believe they do.
The, the last page, seven, is all four pictures of Sunoco I took today. They have something on top of each pump.
And whether or not they have it and whether or not it's approved could be two very different things.
Right.
So what's the difference from their topper that says Marathon versus the Speedy that says What's Grillin', just because it's not the logo of the station? That's what makes it a topper?
I can't say that Speedy or anybody else has asked for those signs to be approved. So I, you know, that's-
Okay.
But the other thing is, is we're not allowed to take into consideration the content of the sign. It is just the sign, it is, we, we're, content is off the, off the table.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not about the onsite ones. Mr. Wyland, you're gonna continue on to discuss the one on US 23, this one shortly, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, the, the large billboard sign, which I believe is considered a legal non-conforming sign. With, with the tag or being identified as a legal non-conforming sign, it, what I'm, what it means is that if, if that sign, you know, blew over today or somehow fell down, it would not be permitted to go back up. There is no variance for it that I could find. It, it's a type of thing that may be secured and made safe, but it is not to be expanded in any way. It is not to be made any, have any greater impact than it already has. The digital portion of our ordinance discusses the fact that fifty percent of a, basically a permitted sign may be digital. I don't feel that this is a permitted sign, so it should not be digital. What happens across the street or what happened across the street, I have no impact on or, you know, I'm not, that, it's not before us today, but the fact is that as far as the way I read our sign ordinance, it should not come into play. Even though they make the sign smaller, the square footage is smaller, I believe the impact will be greater because it's now digital and visual. So that's one I don't necessarily support in any way. And the, the issue that it's an off-site billboard is a concern to me that it, you know, basically, once that property was split or divided and that sign is no longer on the property of the business, then it's considered off-site advertising in the, in the exact terms, the way that the ordinance is written.
And off-site advertising, they're not allowed to be changing it up? I mean, they could change copy or they, or off-site advertising is just not allowed? Is that right?
Well, no, the, the outside, off-site advertising would be considered, have to go on as part of a billboard situation.
Okay.
And so the, this is a non, legal non-conforming sign. They can change copy on it. They can, the entire sign can be changed to any way they want, as long as it's just a face change. And that is permitted under today's ordinance.
And they could actually paint the prices on there if they wanted to of the diesel or whatever they wanted to, but they can't add it as a, a digital possibility there?
That's my opinion, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It would not be.
Okay.
Now, the viewpoint of whether or not that's an expansion, you know, it could be viewed, I guess, you know, certainly differently, since the square footage is being reduced. But even then, the digital portion of the ordinance, which would permit eighty square feet total of, on pole signs and forty on each side and which twenty of which could be digital, seems like an awful, a big change.
And they're requesting seventy-two square feet of digital. Is that correct?
That's, I believe you are correct.
To be added to that sign.
That's right.
They're removing a large portion.
Right. It, from my measurements, it looks like the, it's like forty-six inch, I mean, forty-six feet tall also, that, that entire sign. Our normal signs should be fifteen feet tall?
The pole sign would be limited to fifteen, yes.
Fifteen feet, right. And a billboard, our billboards aren't even allowed to go that high, I don't believe.
I believe you are correct. I think the size would be okay, but not the height.
Not the height. Okay.
Is there an issue with, if, in the event, if Tom decides to sell the property like five, ten years from now, that, is there a problem with that sign being transferable to the new property owners? Because I think you were making a comment that that's not on his property. I didn't look at the contract to see if, in your contract, it's transferable.
On, on the site plan I saw, it showed an easement for it. If Tom says he owns the square that it sits on, that's fine. I mean, the ownership to me, the, I mean, the fact is when it was split apart from the other, years, years ago, when it was separated, you know, I think that was the time that they probably should've either issued a variance for it or done something with it. So, because to me, now it is not advertising, it's not on the site of the business, technically, but it may be just a thousand feet away, but it, it technically is not on the same parcel, but. So you're answering the question of whether they can transfer it? I'm sure they can probably sell anything, but I don't know, it'll probably be a legal question.
I, I mean, because then you don't want to get where they, he's able to just sell that sign and still have the business. I don't know how you would do it, but I think there needs, I'm trying to recommend something cleaner.
I would be willing to enter into something that says that the sign is not gonna be so independent of the building. Is that what you want?
Yeah, I was thinking of that.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would agree to that, okay?
Well, the, the other concern I would have is that if it's viewed totally as an off-site billboard sign, then is it free game to be used as a billboard? Which it really has not been, it was never approved as a billboard. So my thought process would be no. It would have to go through the process of being, becoming approved as a billboard in the township.
As far as I'm concerned, we can enter an agreement that it's my sign, that I'm the only one can advertise on there. That would make you pretty solid as where that sign could go in the future.
Okay. I noted here in one of your letters, Mr. Wyland, that Mr. Nowatzki returned the tax bill to the township explaining that he did not own the parcel that the sign was on?
Every year, they send me Tractor Supplies tax bill for the last four years, so I send it back to them, okay? Sixty-eight fifty was the tax address on that, okay?
Okay, so what about the parcel that the onsite, I mean, that the billboard sign-
As far as I, no, I'm paying it on my, okay, yeah.
You're paid that, okay.
I don't, I don't know why, I've sent it to township three years in a row and I've talked to, to John Healy, who owns, who owns the lease on Tractor Supply. Now, he sold it to somebody else and they're trying to go to the county, get it straightened out, but I gotta send it back each year to the, to the township.
Okay, seems like we can get that fixed.
Are there any more questions at this moment from Mr. Wyland? Come back to me.
I just had one comment to add. In working with Kurt previously on this job, and as he just mentioned a few minutes ago, back in the early nineties when this billboard was erected off US 23, like Kurt mentioned, he had gone through the, the files and the archives and could not find a variance. I'd like the board to consider the fact that had a variance been granted in the early nineties for that billboard, it would still be valid and current today. The variances follow the property for life. So had whoever was involved back then gone ahead and done like Kurt mentioned and, and received a variance, it would be granted under the variance today as well.
I was discussing when the Tractor Supply property was built, not when the sign was put up.
But Kurt, when I moved in in ninety-three or ninety-four, I don't remember which year it was, everything was okay. Okay, I don't remember.
I understand that, but when you sold off the property that either surrounds the sign or that the sign sits on-
Yeah.
It no longer sits on your property. So at that particular time in history-
But if I, but if I owned the property the sign's on, it's my property.
Well, you don't have anything that's shown to us yet that you own that little parcel. I mean, technically, you can't split that land because it's, well, until we can show, show it, I'm not sure it really is. But the fact is that when, when it went through for the split for Tractor Supply, that's when a variance should've been granted to go with it, is my opinion.
I understand. I agree with you, but I'm not in charge of granting those things, okay? I, I follow the rules, okay?
And it seems to me that if we follow that line of logic, that because you own the piece of property, it's, it's yours and the sign is valid, you could, you could sell off any part of your property.
Not necessarily.
But if, if he, or you could, you could buy a piece of property and say, well, it's mine, so now I can put a, a sign up there that, I, I think we're getting into a slippery slope here of whether or not this sign really is off-site advertising right now.
I just agree to not sell that sign, except-
That's why-
With the building, that's why this lady asked.
That's why I asked what I asked, because I wanna be able to tie it to the building so he doesn't sell it separately as a billboard. so he doesn't sell it separately as a billboard.
And your approval, you can state that, okay?
Yeah, I don't want it to be a billboard sign. It's a sign. That's why I'm looking at it the way it is. If, if it stays separate the way it is, then at some point, somebody can do something. So, say that Tom does sell his, his business five, years from now, and the person says, oh, I don't want that sign, I can get more money from Adams, and put up a different sign. So, I just want to make sure that that sign is tied to that business.
The easement that you have... Is it, is it an easement to get to the billboard? Plus the, the property that sits, that it sits on?
Yes.
So the easement, does it run from, from what is shown on this site plan? If you could show me on here where the easement is, please? Down here, because here's their sign. Yeah, so they're coming this way. So the ease, neither the easement nor the property that the billboard sits on, abuts the property that we're, is under consideration tonight, correct? Are there any other questions for Mr. Wieland?
I didn't have a question for Mr. Wieland, but I did want to suggest that it had been brought up earlier, that the need for this electronic sign, what may perhaps be viewed is not that important, because one could go out and paint gas prices, or change the sign manually. In today's world, gas prices change every day, and the logistics of getting a crew in a crane, in a truck, up there to do that with Michigan weather would be just about unfeasible under most conditions. The reason we wanted to propose the EMC is to be competitive in the market with not only neighboring fuel stations, but all the traffic that travels on 23, to let them know about different things that Tom could offer, as well as, you know, perhaps food, perhaps a place to rest. And in order to have those messages change, like they would necessarily have to do to be effective, that's why we would eliminate two hundred square feet of static billboard sign to erect that seventy-two square foot EMC, and give him some flexible options to vary his advertising and to attract attention to the location.
Yes. I'd personally like to see it conform to our regular sign ordinance, you know, where it's fifteen feet tall, and, and then you could, then I would consider the digital portion on it. You're not going to be able to see that from the other side of the expressway anyway, coming southbound on US 23. I would think that people that travel regularly up and down US 23 would, would remember, you know, the regular people anyway, that there's a Marathon there. You know, some people go to Marathon, and some people specifically go to Sunoco, and, you know, depending on where their credit cards are, I would think. But I, I would like to see that sign personally come into conformance with our, our sign ordinance, the one, that sign in particular, that's along the US 23.
Well, it is legal, it's just nonconforming.
Right.
And it is, it's been existing for all this time.
But our ordinance does say, if, when you start to make changes to it, then it needs to come into conformity. Is that true, Mr. Wieland?
I'm not sure if it says that it needs to come into conformity, but it cannot, it should not be expanded.
Expanded, okay.
Or the life of it prolonged in any way.
Right.
We have approval from Kurt to go ahead and reface the sign as it sits. But we're offering to take two hundred feet down, put the LED sign up, so we're competitive. And I disagree with your not seeing it from the north. You can see it when you go in south. You may not stop, because you've passed it, but the next time coming, you will see it, okay? And, and, and I'm not going to get into the business of changing those big signs that were there before I bought it. And it was approved in ninety-three or ninety-four, when I bought it. I haven't changed them at all. Okay? So, but I need to be competitive, and this is one way to be competitive.
Tom, is it on both sides?
Yes, yes, it would be, yeah.
And the illuminating would be on both sides too?
Yes, it would. We would locate that as close to the expressway as we could for both sides.
If there are another questions for Mr. Wieland, I'd like to...
I got a real quick question for Kurt. So, if you want forty square feet, that would be acceptable? That's within our, excuse me, twenty square feet would be acceptable for a digital sign that complies with our...
It would if, if, if we were playing with the number of, we have eighty square feet total for both signs, for both roadways. And then you get fifty percent of, of, you get, you can split that between the two roadways. The other sign may be a hair less than forty out on Whitmore Lake Road, so it's possible the total signage could be a hair more, but not by much. And then fifty percent of the permitted sign can then be digital. So, you're right, I mean, if it was a forty square foot sign on Whitmore Lake Road that was permitted, twenty square feet of it could be digital. They can add, it's, I believe they can also add the gas, the free six square feet for gas stations, to that, on top of that, so they could technically make it probably, if it was forty, make it twenty-six square feet of digital. So, that would be the maximum that I see we could squeeze out of it. The unfortunate thing is that that height, twenty-six square feet, becomes pretty small.
Well, is there any reason why it couldn't be lowered to the ground?
I'm sure the, you have to ask the applicant, but I'm sure it's because you can't see it as far away when it's down there.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure that's true.
To lower the sign would be structurally altering it, which is what we're not supposed to do.
That's true.
And then we would be lowering it.
Right, but you're altering it by taking out some too.
Well, making it smaller.
Reduction in height would make it less obtrusive, so that wouldn't increase its nonconformity.
I think the key to the whole sign is the height and the visibility that we currently enjoy from having it there. I mean, if we bring that down to fifteen, the average guy is six feet tall, it's only as tall as two guys, one standing on the other one's shoulder, and it's just, you wouldn't see it. You, you, it just wouldn't fly. The fifteen-foot height that you'd suggested is shown, both at Sunoco, along Territorial, Sitco Territorial, and now Tom at Whitmore Lake. And if you reposition, and you could just lift those signs up and put them on the highway, they wouldn't have hardly any effect whatsoever. They're just, they're just too small. So there's the audience that we're trying to cater to.
Look at the height of the Sunoco, of Sunoco across the street, you're the number seven there, you see it is high, higher, is high, if not higher than that.
I'm sure that's a grandfathered sign too, I would think.
Any other questions for Mr. Wieland? All right. At this point, we will ask if there are any members of the public that would like to speak in support of the petition. Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Dale Brewer, I live at 11548 East Shore Drive, Whitmore Lake. First thing I'd like to do is, just to give you a quick comment, you're talking about a parcel that may or may not exist, that's one sixteenth of an acre under ownership. It's an impossibility to happen, because it's an illegal split. You'd have to get a, you'd have to come back to your CBA and get a split, or an application for a split to reduce the size, also not to have any frontage. It's showing on the site plan for Tractor Supply as strictly an easement for the thing. So regardless of that, and it would have to have a separate address. None of those things exist at this time. So, first of all, I think those, you can concur with the fact that what Kurt is saying, it is an off-site sign, which was created strictly by Mr. Nowitzki in the, in the process of splitting the property. I'd like to just go with you a couple other comments, and I'll try and make them as quick and brief as I can. But there's only two reasons that a variance should be given. One is a hardship, and the other is a practical difficulty. Neither of these exist in this case. This property, everything existed as it was. Mr. Nowitzki has decided after the fact that now he has this hardship that he's imposed and created on himself. No one has created this hardship except for him. Therefore, he does not qualify under either hardship or practical difficulty for any of the variances that are being requested. Mr. Nowitzki continues to do pretty much as he likes to do. He may sit here and tell you that he's in compliance on a lot of things. Recently, he was removing the spoiled soils from the site, taking them to a nonconforming site in Green Oak, and attempting to dispose of them. Was caught there, and had threatened with the possibility of a ticket, and has to stop. The people, the location where the site is, where they were, has now been ticketed, and they're trying to determine if the spoils have been contaminated, or if they can remain there, or what they may have to do with it. He's causing a hardship on another person by his not following through and legally disposing of the four hundred some odd cubic yards of property, of yards of soil that was required by his site plan. Secondly, he's got two new light poles that are on the property, that are out by the, one is out by the easement on the road, and the second one is on the far side, on the north side. Those do not have, are not down shadowed boxes, but they're, furthermore, they're not shown on the site plan. So again, he's taken his own liberty, created something else that's there, and it shouldn't be there. They're not on the site plan. There's no reason that those light poles should be where they're at, and if they are going to be there, they should conform with your ordinance, not be in China all over like they could be. Again, I've already mentioned the proposed billboard, but the proposed billboard currently as it exists is on sixty-eight fifty, not on sixty-nine hundred. All of your applications for, that you have in front of you tonight, show that as being a property listed to sixty-nine hundred. Therefore, the application itself is improper, and it cannot be acted upon until it's presented properly with a address that coincides with the location of the billboard. I'd also like to mention that Mr. Nowitzki is delinquent on personal property taxes, which include the billboard for a year and a half. He hasn't paid any personal property taxes, and that may or may not include that particular billboard, since it's not on sixty-nine hundred. And all of the applications, and everything that's been applied for is under parcel, personal property number ninety-nine twenty oh sixty-one nine hundred. I don't know if that property has been taxed, if it's that or not, but since it's not on that property, it would have to have a separate personal property number, and it should be coinciding with sixty-eight fifty, not sixty-nine hundred. You also mentioned the other types of signage. Please keep in mind that all of the signage that you see going up and down the expressway for the gas stations is on gas station property, not on other people's property, not on other parcels, even if they're owned by the same person. So, if you go up and down the expressway, you see the Sitco sign, which still remains a shell sign at the moment, you see the Sunoco sign, which is on the other side, which is on the Sunoco property, you see a Speedway sign on Speedway property, you see a Marathon sign on Marathon property. The only other advertising that's going on is on the, from Speedway. They rent a billboard, because they want to have the exposure. There are other opportunities out there than just having the sign go up. Billboards are available, they can be rented, and the other is the MDOT signs, which Mr. Nowitzki already takes advantage of, and he has that up on both north and south sides, advertising the location of his gas station, which are approximately a mile prior to the exits, which give an adequate notification that there's a Marathon station that's there. And as far as, again, his comment that he has to do this to be competitive, and that Marathon requires it, that's an inaccuracy. Marathon requires that you put up as much signage as you can, but you have to be within local ordinances, and you have to abide by local ordinances. So, keep that in mind as you're looking at this. This is not something that is, been, yes, derived, and, you know, he's come up with. Marathon does not have a stipulation that you must do this. Marathon says you may advertise to the extent, same as all other gas stations, that local ordinance permits. They don't, you don't have to create a local ordinance to conform with Marathon or any other gas station for advertising. Again, the fuel distribution business that he's talking about, you know, his need and desire to be competitive should have been recognized when he did his site plan. Shouldn't be an after fact, like it's going on right now. This is all just delayed activity, and, you know, it's really, it's sad, but, you know, he didn't, he didn't do his own due diligence, coming in for a site plan approval. He had numerous problems there, and he did get through the process. Now he has to deal with that. But giving variances to someone just because they created their own problem is not something that the township should be looking at. I think, and I hope that you will look at what Mr. Wieland has presented to you regarding the billboard on the expressway, and I hope you will deny it based on his recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Brewer, thank you. Yes. But first, does, is anyone here, anybody, I see nobody else that wishes to speak? So yes, the applicant may have some time?
Hi. I want to thank him for pointing out all those inaccuracies, okay? Our taxes were completely paid two weeks ago. The dirt that I sold to the neighbor up the street was, he was provided with the test reports from phase one, phase two, that it was clean dirt. It was his problem on the other side, he didn't get a permit, and he's got, didn't get a ticket, and he's got to prove it. So, it wasn't my inaccuracies, okay? Thank you.
See no one else that wishes to speak? I will take a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Do I have a support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Do the ward members have any questions or comments?
The only comment that I have is, because we've had situations like this before on the township board, is that we are only here to make the decisions on the variances, and we can't make, use information that, that is outside of this way on what we're deciding on today.
I have a question for the applicant. The Marathon in Brighton, on Grand River, between, no, that's not Grand River, between Grand River and Lee Road on Whitmore Lake Road, has no signage. There is not, there's the Marathon Canopy sign, but they do not even have a sign advertising their gas prices. So curious as to, to your response to that, that one station is doing well with minimal signage?
I doubt if they have commercial diesel, okay? They may have a diesel pump for pickups, okay? But they're not soliciting the big trucks up and down the highway, which I work on on a daily basis. And almost everybody that solicits those trucks on the highway has a digital sign, or the truckers won't come in, because they don't know you're there. They will after a while, but it takes you a while to get them to come in. So, I don't know why they don't have signs, but that, that wouldn't be me.
And, and one other thing, the, one of the variance standards that we have to apply is... Why is the variance necessary for you to continue to use your property? The property, not, not you, but the property for its, its use, which is all the uses that you have there? What, what is the necessary reason for the variance, for the signs, that, that if you did not have it, would keep you from operating a gas station and truck and trailer repair there?
It would probably give me about three-quarters less diesel than I would It would probably give me about three quarters less diesel than I would sell normally, and I didn't spend that kind of money, okay, to do twenty-five percent of the business, based on what Duncan has told me coming up and down the street in trucks, okay? And I don't know what else I can say. The variance, I didn't create these signs. I bought into it when I bought here, okay? And I didn't expand them, I just resurfaced them, and I'm going to take four down, plus two hundred feet on the, on the sign, and make it a lot better, looking a lot better. And I think I'm doing my fair share to make this township look presentable, okay? And we need to have a digital sign.
Thank you.
Question. Is it possible to put another sign out at the far end of your property? Leave the billboard sign alone, that big one. Put another sign out at the, I know it's not on the site plan, at the US twenty-three border, you know, of your property, that would fit, would conform to the eighty square feet, you know, forty here and forty here. Yes, it'd be small, it would be down close to the, to the US twenty-three, and I guess I'd have to leave it to Mr. Whalen.
I would have to ask Kurt.
If that'd be appropriate, but...
I would have a problem with that, because right now, we have signs that are not being used, and they are corroded, and, and we've never asked people who abandoned properties to take those signs down. In this situation, we have a sign that is there to be used, and he's not changing it other than changing what it looks like. So, I would have a problem then adding another sign, and my concern would be then, this sign would be abandoned, it would look, it would start deteriorating, and then you would have the issue of having now two signs out there. So, I would have a problem with that. On twenty-three. I mean, we have enough signs on twenty-three.
I have to agree with that, but, but bringing it down low, bringing that digital portion down low to the ground, lower to the ground, and it could be smaller than, and it would be no more than forty square feet, I think that would be a win. I doubt that Mr. Nowatzky would abandon and not take care of that big Nowatzky sign up there because it's got his name on it, you know, so...
It'd be a possibility if you don't grant him a variance. So, I mean, he could abandon, and if he wanted to. I'm almost certain that he could if we don't give him any, if we don't do the correct thing now, because what you were saying is it hasn't been corrected. It hasn't been corrected, there hasn't been a variance to it.
Well, the sign, I'm sure, I mean, that's, if you go back to the pole sign section that referenced it, then one at the northeast corner of the building, you know, if that one came down, he could certainly put up a conforming pole sign, or a goal post sign along US twenty-three. If, if the, if the billboard is left the way it is and just resurfaced, he certainly would get plenty of use out of it, I'm sure. And as far as abandoned signs, the ones at the old gas station were removed up on Sixth Mile.
There's still a sign?
Not, not at the highway sign. There's a gas price sign left at the site, the big ones have been removed. It took three owners to track them down to, and through the...
Yeah, but I, I just don't want to get to that. So, I don't want to have more signs out on the highway than, than is necessary. So, I don't know if that's the solution.
Right.
Of having one more sign.
But Mr. Nowatzky could put a forty square foot sign up along US twenty-three at the border of his property, and that's allowed, is that correct? Because the one on, on Whitmore Lake is allowed, he's allowed one on each roadway, correct?
That's, I would, I would agree with that.
Okay.
But the one by the building would have to come down.
But the one by the building would have to, well, that's already been marked to come down, anyway.
Right, but he's going to ask for keeping that up. I mean, that's, you know, I, I think that is a possibility.
Right, okay, so...
We're talking about the one in the northeast corner that...
Yes, sir.
Okay. My concern with the EMS signs is that thi, this is a very large sign that it's going under, and the site itself is very industrial looking. It does not look like a gas station that commuters use. The first time I went in there, I wasn't sure that I was in the right spot, I needed gas, but I, it's so industrial looking that I wasn't sure if I was supposed to be there. My concern with this, adding this EVMS portion of the sign, is that it will, it will add an aesthetic to the sign and to the site that it is nothing more than a truck stop. And I'm not sure that that's the aesthetic we need at that location in Northville Township. I, I, these EVMS signs are a concern to me.
Ma'am, there's a truck stop across the street. Sunoco's.
Right, but how, how does this help? How does this help the aesthetic of your site? Your site is so, like I said, it's industrial looking, and it is not friendly to the mom and the minivan coming in because of the industrial...
You also have a truck stop on Sixth Mile, too, at Speedway.
But do we want that aesthetic at that location? When you get off twenty-three, I, I'm not sure that this is the right location, the right sign.
Well, that's not for us to talk about the location, because the location's already been approved by the planning commission.
Of the billboard?
No, of, of the, what he's doing. His whole site plan has already been approved.
I'm talking about the location for the sign.
That's been there for years.
Right, but I'm talking about the, what we are considering tonight is not the sign, we're considering the EVMS, correct? I'm talking about the location, this, this EVMS...
You mean the electronic?
I think it changes the character of, of the way that, of that sign and, off of twenty-three. And I drove up and down twenty-three today to look at it, and if you're going north, you don't see it. If you're coming south, you've already passed it. So, I'm not sure how much help that will be to you in the long run, to have that electronic portion.
Well, it would serve, it would serve Nowatzky Truck and Trailer a lot more than a new sign that would be compliant at fifteen foot high and forty square feet. And if we did have a forty square foot sign, Kurt, couldn't only a percentage of that be electronic? Fifty percent? So, then now we're down to twenty.
You get the bonus six square feet for gas.
Okay, so twenty, twenty-six, whereas the EMC we're proposing is seventy-two square It would, it would allow the traffic to know the gas pricing, you know, food option, a rest, just, just other amenities that, that would otherwise be, be missed by traffic.
If you put six square feet on the expressway, you're not going to see a driving truck down the road or a car at seventy miles an hour or sixty miles an hour, okay? It's too small.
And also, that in addition, the suppliers of these signs and regular unleaded and diesel and, and premiums gas changers do state emphatically that if you're on the expressway and your character height of one fifty-nine or whatever is less than three feet, you've really not done what you're supposed to do. So, it does need to be a thirty-six inch character.
But if the intent is to advertise diesel, why is that not on the main portion of the site?
Well, that would be part of the change, that with the EMC, we could change that. You know, we could, we could go from regular unleaded and to diesel, instead of having that be static, permanent portion of the site. And this is all new, so what we see currently today doesn't really reflect what Tom's done for twenty sixteen.
All right, thank you. Do any of the board members have any other comments?
I do have one comment. So, this is, I, and this is not against what was presented, but I think more information or we're going to have to address it better, is that the, I would like to propose to take the billboard sign and that off the table tonight and pen that. And Tom, I'm not saying, I mean, we can come back in even a week from now or two weeks from now and have a discussion, but I, I think that, that there is too many concerns here, and I would like to have it cleaned up, so that when we come back to this in the future, we're not going to have an issue with it. I personally feel, and I'm just going to say this, that the planning commission should have identified that as part of the site plan, and it was probably overlooked, that I am not pointing fingers, but I think it was overlooked, and I think if we're, if, if we're being here to state what it should be and how it should be, I think that, right now, I don't know if I have enough information to, to make the motion the right way.
Could you give me, could you spell out what you would like to see, what information you would feel comfortable, more comfortable having when we come back? What, what are you looking for so that we, we have some action items to walk away?
Well, if, nobody has problem with, I mean, Greg and I just spoke really briefly. If you guys don't have a problem that there isn't an address on the, the billboard sign, that it's not tied to the building, I mean, I'd like to be able to tie it to the building. So, my, what I'd like to do is, number one, make sure that it's not expanded beyond what it is, and that we can tie it to the building, and I want to make sure that we can do that in a motion.
So, you would like some time to work through...
I want, I would like to see if we could do that.
Okay.
And, and Tom, excuse me, but I think if we don't do it the right way, we'll have other issues.
Well, we tried to go with the planning commission because my planner made us state the arrow wrong. We tried to write the signage, so basically we got the CBA, that's what we're here.
Okay. All right.
Shuffle it back and forth.
Yeah, it's shuffling back and forth, okay.
My turn? I think that the reason we never saw this is because it is off-site. I mean, we, we got the site plan for the actual property that was being developed, and so this wasn't even considered part of, of that property at the time, and so now it's sort of being looped into this here with this, with the signage issue. So, as a planning commission, we always knew that sign was out there, but it was always on somebody else's property, and, and I guess I would like also, as you say, clarification, and perhaps from our planner then, on why this is separate. And then maybe, maybe we need something from the attorney as to how to tie it together if it really is separate, so...
I mean, I don't want to do this in the wrong way, I want to do it the right way, so there isn't any issues going forward on it. Because if we keep it separate, then, as you said, it's considered a billboard. And so, I just want to make sure that it is tied to the building and that, I mean, I agree, we could do not to be expanded right now, but I want to make sure that we can tie it to the building.
My concern with that, tying it to the building, is if it truly is an off-site sign, there's nothing, if we voted just on what's in front of us, we can't, because it was not noticed as an off-site advertising sign. So, then that, I think that raises the question of, then, do we need to renotice it to be proper, you know, proper notice?
Right.
For that it is off-site, truly off-site advertising.
I would be more comfortable in addressing the other ones and having this one come off for right now, and seeing how we can address it properly.
Okay.
And if that means that we have to come back a week from now, I would, I wouldn't mind doing that.
As long as it's not something that has to be renoticed?
Right.
Right, okay.
Can we move?
Um, we, I think we have to give, what, eighteen, twenty-four hours' notice or something like that?
For a special...
Or is it two, for a special meeting? Is it two days' notice or something like that? Or three days' notice? I'm not sure.
Township's eighteen hours, but I don't know what the CBA wants.
Pardon me?
Township is eighteen hours, but I don't know what's the difference.
Yeah, yeah, township is eighteen hours.
Is the applicant also responsible for paying for a special meeting? I know in some townships you have to...
I'm the one who requested, huh? I don't think he should have to...
I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I don't think he should have to pay for it.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I'm leaning toward just resurfacing the sign and putting a new sign up like she suggested, only going for a variance, because we need three-foot-high letters by the expressway. Is that going to work?
Say that again?
I'm leaning toward just resurfacing my big sign and leave it there. Put up a new sign on my property, so it's compliant, but it's got to have three-foot digital letters, it's going to be six by twelve, right?
Something like that, yeah. Kurt has said we could go with forty square feet, fifteen foot high, forty square feet, and half the sign could be digital. So, if we can propose that, you feel that would be a viable solution to, to get the digital away from the billboard, is that what we're hearing? Have them be two separate situations, and it could be located directly on the property?
But it's adding another sign.
But that's the other thing, it's adding another sign.
Would you be taking down the pole sign at the corner of the building?
No.
Then I, I would deny it, because of the fact that you have too many pole signs already, so, without a variance.
Then I'm going to have to get my attorney involved, because we're at an impasse here, okay? I, I can't afford two more months without a sign, and this is becoming ridiculous.
The sign on the northeast corner, is that even visible from, would it be a loss for you to take that down? What...
Why do I have to take it down? It's been there since the nineteen eighties.
But if you want to do what you're asking with the EVMS...
I thought I was being pretty fair by taking two hundred feet off the sign and putting the something up I needed, and taking down three or four other signs. I mean, that's pretty compliant. It's not like I'm asking for the world here.
And yet, we're still here on a variance request. But we're still here on a variance request, so I'm asking you the question of, the, the sign on the northeast corner, to what is that oriented? Is that, does that draw attention? Is that a sign that could, that could go so that you could do what you're proposing with the separate EVMS?
It's a sign with a company name on it, and how, how can you tell when it draws attention or not? I don't know, it's, it's, you come, you see the sign, it's there, okay? Why should I spend twenty thousand dollars to take the sign down?
I mean, it can be seen from the, the highway as well as North Territorial and Whitmore Lake.
That sign rotates, okay? I don't have it rotating, but it rotates. When I moved in, it had open on it, and when they were a fuel station there, when that was rotating, they were open for fuel, okay? I resurfaced it and just put my name on it, and I have it stationary. So, that's why it's so big, and that's why it's there. Yes, ma'am. That was put up, I think, by Presanning Reed in nineteen eighty-six, or eighty-four.
So, Mr. Nowatzky, I'll ask you, what would you like us to do? Do you want us to move forward on voting on it tonight, so that you have a, a decision when you leave, or would you like...
Yeah, I, I will, I want to use my big sign, take two hundred feet off, put the digital up, and take those other signs down. and take those other signs down. And I will live with the fact that that sign goes with the building. You can put it in your motion and I'll, whatever we have to do for that, okay?
Member Otto?
If you guys wanna move forward, let's move forward. I don't wanna, I mean, I want to try to do the right thing by Mr. Nowatzky, but if he wants us to move forward, let's try.
So we will...
Ma'am, are you happy with the fact that I will tie it to the building?
Yeah, I just wanted to do it the right way.
Yeah, okay. If you vote yes, it's the right way, but I will tie that sign to the building, so I can't independently sell it to somebody who can argue with you about a billboard, okay? If you wanna wait and come back next week...
No, I think what we, what we wanted was almost fifteen days, she had the hope and everything, so they probably...
The sign is two months out, okay, to order, okay? It's not like you can go get it off the front, so... All right, thank you.
All right, so because we need to do this in two different votes, we will split, we will split the vote. The first vote will be for the sign on 23 with the EVMS portion, and the second vote will be for the remainder of the sign, the sign program that is all within the...
We should do four separate votes.
You want it...
As a group.
So you want to break it all up?
Yeah, it's all four, yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna vote for it as a package, not as separate items?
No, I'm saying that I wouldn't want you to vote on it as a package.
You want the, you want them separate items, okay.
I agree. You can do it as a package, it's either y or n, so...
So we have the pump toppers, the two additional canopy signs, the pole sign and the EMS, correct? All right, then I will entertain a motion, or someone to make a motion for the EMS sign.
I'll just go through exactly how it's written in, on the thing, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
However you want to do it.
Okay. So in the case of JZBA 160001 for Nowatzky Truck and Trailer at 6900 Whitmore Lake Road in Whitmore Lake, Michigan, I make the motion to request a variance from Section 36-793-1 for two additional wall signs on the gasoline pump canopy.
Is there support?
I'll support it.
All in favor?
I need to abstain.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Do we need a roll call?
Do you want to do, do you like to do a roll call?
That would be fine.
Okay.
On this, this would be fine for a roll call on each one of them, so everybody, because we don't have everybody voting on some of these.
Ready? Ms. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Collecky, yes. Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Ms. Shockley?
Abstain.
So the two wall, two canopy signs are approved?
Okay, in the case of JZBA 160001, Nowatzky Truck and Trailer at 6900 Whitmore Lake Road in Whitmore Lake, Michigan, I'd like to make the motion for the variance from Section 36-795 for eight pump toppers to read "marathon."
Is there support?
I'll support it again.
Moved and supported. Board member Otto?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Collecky?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry.
Stephens, no?
Abstain, abstain.
So the motion for the pump toppers was denied?
I'd like to make the motion for Case JZBA 160001 in Nowatzky Truck and Trailer at 6900 Whitmore Lake Road in Whitmore Lake, Michigan, the variance from Section 36-803 Article, and I'm not gonna say this, this is probably thirty, what?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. And Section 36-901 and Section 36-796 to remove a portion of the existing legal nonconforming sign and install a new six-by-twelve electronic signage.
Do I have support?
I'll support.
Moved and supported. Board member Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Collecky?
No.
Stephens, no?
Shockley, no.
Thank you. All right. The portion of the variance for the EMS has been denied.
For Case JZBA 160001, Nowatzky Truck and Trailer at 6900 Whitmore Lake Road in Whitmore Lake, Michigan, this is, I move for a variance to retain the legal nonconforming four-by-ten pole sign that was shown on the proposed site plan as being removed.
I support.
Moved and supported. Board member Otto?
Yes.
Member Collecky?
Yes.
Stephens, no? Shockley?
Abstain.
Moved and denied. All right, so Mr. Nowatzky, your variance for the canopy signs was approved, the others were denied. Is he ready to pull permits for the canopy signs? I don't know, what is the...
I think it's just a matter of issuing them.
Issuing permits, okay. So you will get with, Mr. Nowatzky, Mr. Anderson will get with Mr. Wyland to finish up any paperwork for the canopy signs for permits, correct? All right. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes for the August seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, and September twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen hearings. Are there any board member corrections to the minutes? None? Do I have a motion to approve the August seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen zoning board of appeals minutes? Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the September twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen zoning board of appeals minutes? Moved and supported, all in favor?
Sir, who are the, who are moving and supporting?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So you are moving and Collecky supporting?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Call to the public, any members of the public wish to make any comment to the board?
Dale Brewer, 115480 Shore Drive. Just like to again comment back, Ms. Otto made a comment that it should have been, the electronic sign should have been noted in the site plan. I was at all of those meetings, and there was questions that was brought up, and anything within so many feet of the property was identified as signs. The one that was to the north of it, we did talk about Marlene, if you remember, said it was not their property, but even though it was showing on the site plan. The other one was, it's completely off of the site plan, so there would be no way that anyone would have even considered that since it wasn't brought up, you know, by his planner. And, you know, but there was a lot of discussion on signs all the way through, so it wasn't a topic that was taken lightly during the whole time, and I know that the Planning Commission did do, you know, due diligence on it. The failure, again, was on the part of Mr. Nowatzky and Mr. Nowatzky's planner, and again, he just likes to rapidly move quickly and do what he wants to do. He doesn't, he doesn't, he stood up at the meetings many times and said, "I don't even read the ordinances, I don't even know what they are, and I don't care." So, I mean, as long as he takes this type of an attitude, again, you know, it's not the fault of the Planning Commission for recognizing or not recognizing, you know, what's going to be done with that sign, so... And again, I, just to, again, if there needs to be something done with it because it is a separate parcel, then it should be given a separate address, and if you go down and you look at the Adams signs, they have an address on those signs, and it's identified by an address that goes with the sign so that, again, when it comes to doing personal property tax on it, it can be done properly. I don't know, and again, it's something, hopefully, the Planning Commission, or the, you know, that can be conveyed back to the township assessor, rather, that has been included in any personal property. Again, that's something that's not disclosed to the public, so it's difficult for anyone to know, but the assessor would know because he has a list of personal property that's been, that has been professed by the property owner, is what's there. It may not have even been taxed for a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members, any comments from members of the board?
The only thing I would like to say is, in regards to the sign on 23, you guys don't have a solution. It's still there, and it's not gone, and that's what I was trying to get to, is a solution, so we have what we have, and it's not going away.
That's true. I have a, this is not a comment about the applicant or anything, but I'm a new ZBA member, and the Michigan Association of Planning is offering some training for ZBA members, and I'm gonna take advantage of it, so I just want, if none of you've had the opportunity to attend one of the trainings, I'm just bringing it up. March third is in Belleville, so it's nearby if anyone wants to attend.
Thank you. And I would like to thank Jackie Otto and Greg Collecky for stepping up and being our officers. Let's see, next meeting is March twenty-first, if there's something on the agenda. That takes care of our business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.